All right, now being six o'clock, I'll call the Monday, October 23rd meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. We're going to take Frankie real quick to talk about his Eagle Scout project and then we're going to be meeting with the Fire Chief, Tom Coulter, and to recognize George Colby and his service. So Frankie, do you want to come up front first and then let us know what's happening with your project?
All right, so this is going to be kind of like a final follow-up.
Perfect.
Just wanted to let you guys know the status. So this is the final decision on the bench. If you look to, like, I think it's the third page, we're going to have a, it's going to be the brown color for the C option and then the green, it's going to be the black. Again, all recyclable material and it's set to have the benches, we're going to have them made in or assembled and everything by mid-November, so that's when they'll be going in. They're going to be facing the street. It's going to be like with the back up against Mr. Rick Burnett's fence, so it's going to be facing out near the gazebo and very well to say there's going to be two of them, like right on each side, so.
Very nice.
Very good.
Great. Look forward to seeing the finished product.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for coming in.
Well done.
Okay, we have got this on our agenda for seven o'clock, so we're going to have to apologize if anyone comes at seven, because you're all here at six. So Chief, why don't I turn things over to you?
Sure, absolutely. Representative Coulter will be with us in a moment. Thank you, Board of Selectmen, for having us tonight. Tonight we're going to celebrate the retirement of firefighter George Colby after 43 years of service to the town. I can think of only one other man that has spent on this department that was longer, so George has certainly given him many, many years of service. So it'll be, part one will be with Representative Thomas Coulter, we'll give him a declaration from House of Representatives, and then followed by the Fire Service Award, the Years of Service plaque, and then the retirement badge. Representative Coulter, we'd like to have you step up, George.
Great. Could I just, George? Well, thank you for having me to the Board. I appreciate every opportunity you give me to stop by and share in your celebrations and honor the people that deserve recognition for extraordinary service. Before I say, before I read the citation, George, I'd like to tell you that I grew up in a small town as well, the small town of Awan, smaller than Plumpton. Four square miles, small amount of people, and everybody knew everybody. And my family worked on the fire service, and so I understand I've got some of a unique perspective as to what someone working on the fire service in a small town does. And it's amazing, you're one part fireman, one part medic, one part counselor, when you're working on people, they're your friends, they're your neighbors, oftentimes your relatives. When you're fighting a fire, it could be a home that you grew up in or hung around in after school, and when somebody inside the department is hurting, you know, it's not like you're working for the city of Boston where there's a peer supporting you or mediation or anything like that. You are, you know, the padre for that time. So 43 years in the job, I do have a sense as to what you've gone through, the service you've provided, and who you are. And so, as I said to the Board before, occasionally, although not often enough, we get the opportunity to recognize people who've done extraordinary things. And I go to the House members and I ask them to join me in recognizing a member of my district, of my community, for, it could be an extraordinary act of extraordinary career, it could be an extraordinary act of kindness. And they vote on it. It doesn't always pass. Well, I'm happy to tell you that when we put forth a citation to recognize your career and your service, it passed and it passed unanimously. So I'd like to read it to you, George, and then share this with you. If I come over to your house during Election Day when I'm knocking on doors, I do expect to see it. And this is the citation from the Massachusetts House of Representatives, and it reads as follows, if I may. You hereby know to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to George E. Colby in recognition of your retirement after 43 years of dedicated service to the Plumpton Fire Department. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all of your endeavors, given this 23rd day of October 2017. Signed by Speaker of the House, Robert A. DeLeo, and your proud representative, Thomas J. Coulter. And this citation, in addition to a copy, going to you and your family, George, will be filed in the archives at the State House along with guys named Adams and Hancock that will be there, so.
I knew some of them.
Congratulations. It's all my fault.
Well, that's a tough act to follow. Tom is always a tough act to follow. All right, the second part of our night is the accommodation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fire Services. When George signed up in 1974.
Seventy-four.
Nineteen seventy-four, we had a brand-new station. It was in when you came in, right?
Yeah, they were within I came in.
Right. At that time, it was a small group of dedicated, actually professional people who had trained very well, there's 23 or 24 guys, and George joined the force and didn't take him long to find out that's where he needed to be. When I joined, 21 years ago, I recognized in short order it was where I needed to be. And I must tell you that the fire service for me, and I know for George, changes your life forever. And if you can give the dedication of that, especially as a call man, because it's, you are on-call 24 hours a day. You will always have your pager on you, and when it's not on you, something is wrong and you have to find, you'll stop everything to go find that page, because that's how we get a hold of it. Of course, back then, they had Insta-alerts and they got phone calls at times. So to be a call firefighter, to me, stands above any other part of the fire service because of the dedication that involves. So this is a very big day for the Plumpton Fire Department and the town of Plumpton and its residents to recognize this man as years of, many years of service. So this certificate is the, from the Massachusetts Firefighting Department of Fire Services, and it's to firefighter George Colby from Plumpton Fire Department in grateful appreciation and recognition of your 43 years of dedicated fire service as a call firefighter on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts this 30th day of September 2017. George, this is for you.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, so if you, this next thing is also from the Department of Fire Services, and what it is, is the years of service pin. The Department only gives a 10-year time, a 10-year interest, so this is a 40-year pin from the Department of Fire Services. When I called them and I filled out the application and called them, they called me back three times to make sure they had the years right. That's a true story. So George, this is the Department of Fire Services Call Firefighter Award for years of service, okay? Okay. All right, and then, now, this is your retirement badge. And if you could, can you pop that down thing off? Put that in the showcase? Okay. All right. Yeah, you know, I can't see, that's my crow. Close it. All right, George Colby, this is, as your chief, it's my honor to award you with this retirement badge that's signified as retired Plumpton Fire Department for 43 years of service, and your number six will be retired on this date. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay? The reason I'm standing here as your chief is, one of the big reasons, is because of this man right here. Thank you, George, for your service. Thank you very much for having us.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, the honors are ours.
Thank you, guys.
Can I just mention, the newspaper mentioned last week that for the 44 years of doing this, George's wife had gotten up every night with every night call, so attribute that way as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, why don't we take a 10-minute recess and have some goodies and just celebrate your retirement? All right, so I'll make a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
I'd second.
Take it on favor.
So we are back. Next, we move to updates and discussions. Town Administrator Search Follow-Up. I'm happy to report that we had two terrific finalists that the Town Administrator Screening Committee recommended to us. We interviewed the candidates last Tuesday, and it was an extremely difficult decision. They were both very qualified, very competent individuals with a wide variety of experience, but in the end, we decided to appoint or offer the position to Elizabeth Dennehy, who is from Rainham, and her work experience is that she is the Community Development Director in the town of Walpole. She also had some experience in the town of, was it Fairhaven?
Um...
Fall River, Fall River.
Yeah.
All right, do you want to read the press release, or do you guys have anything else to report on the screening?
No, happy that we're through that process, hopefully. It'd be great.
I would echo that we were confronted with two excellent, seemed to be excellent candidates, accomplished people, people that were pretty nice fit with Plumpton, and it was a really hard decision.
It was.
And I'm absolutely thrilled that we chose Elizabeth, and so I'm glad to read the press release if you think I have to or you want to.
Do you want to read the press release, or?
Christine, yeah.
I mean, we've all got a copy.
I think I have one addition I'd like to make.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you read it then?
Okay.
With your addition.
All right, so the headline is "Plumpton Hire's First Town Administrator." Wonderful headline. Been a long time in coming, long time. "Plumpton, Mass: The Plumpton Board of Selectmen is pleased to announce the hiring of Elizabeth Dennehy as the community's first town administrator. Ms. Dennehy has more than 10 years of experience in municipal government, including serving as the community development director in Walpole and as the planning director and environmental affairs officer in Fall River. We are excited to welcome Elizabeth Dennehy as Plumpton's first town administrator," said Christine Joy, chairman of the Plumpton Board of Selectmen. "Her skills, experience, and local knowledge will prove beneficial to the Plumpton municipal team and will help us to achieve continued success for the community." Ms. Dennehy of Rainham was one of the two finalists for the position. The second finalist, Joshua Garcia, of Holyoke, currently works for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, where he serves as a manager of municipal services focusing on smaller population communities. Quote, "We are highly impressed with the qualification of both finalists," Chairman Joy said. "It was a difficult decision for the Board." There were a total of 38 applicants for the position. The Board of Selectmen was supported in the search by a seven-member Town Administrator Search Committee, and we should say it aside, we're really, really grateful for all the hard work they did, and by Community Paradigm Associates, a municipal consulting firm that focuses on assisting communities with such services as executive recruiting, strategic planning, municipal finance, economic development, and leadership training. If I can throw in a little parenthetical thing there, Community Paradigm did a really wonderful job for us as well.
They certainly did.
In Walpole, Ms. Dennehy was responsible for all aspects of the town's community and economic development department, including preparation of annual budget, attracting and negotiating with new businesses, hiring and supervising personnel, providing technical assistance to various boards and commissions, and updating zoning bylaws. Her work in Fall River involved managing all aspects of the city planning department. Ms. Dennehy holds both a Master of Public Administration degree and a Bachelor of Science degree in Earth Environmental Studies from Bridgewater State University. She is a notary public and served on the Freetown Cultural Council from 2008 to 2014, and the Freetown Emergency Management Agency from 2005 to 2013. So that's a really nice news release. I wonder if we might add a final sentence saying something like, "Final, pending final contract negotiations, Ms. Dennehy will start in late November."
That's beautiful.
Just want to write that on there then, and then I'll do it.
Yeah. Pending final contract negotiations, Ms. Dennehy will start work late November. So that's written on there, I'll pass it back to you.
Excellent.
Okay. So a long time in coming, and we have an amazingly energetic Board as it is, particularly that end of the table, and even so, having additional hand and additional talent is really wonderful.
And would you like this to be sent to, to be posted on the town website?
I would send it first to Bernie, just to make sure we...
Send the Bernie's first?
Yeah.
And then once approval, then?
Can you get a copy of that to write my story this week?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That I will send too.
Yeah.
And WATD from the interview this morning is interested in seeing it as well.
Sure.
So, and the local papers.
Absolutely. Perfect.
And Globe.
And the Globe.
Yeah, I'll send it off to the Globe, but Bernie's probably got them included.
I think that they were going to do, you know, Bree, why don't you touch base with Sharon? She was the one that sent the email. Find out who's she sending it to so that nothing slips through the crack, and then we'll send. And just ask them if they could amend the release to include the language that Mark proposed.
Okay.
And if not, then we'll just, we'll just include it in the language, in the press releases that we send out.
Okay. Will I use that? This is a Word doc?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, fire and EMS consultant MRI follow-up.
Okay, so we've sent out invitations to 20 people, which does not include the Fire Chiefs or the Town Administrators of surrounding towns.
Okay.
Starting to get replies, it's starting to trickle back. We're going to have two interview days, Friday, this Friday, 27th. We'll be doing ourselves, one of the Halifax Fire Chiefs and potentially one other person yet to be cemented. The bulk of the people who are either existing or former will be done on Saturday, November 4th. So we'll be through the interviews then and we'll wait, start to get some input back. So the process is going, and hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll be, you know, start thinking about, you know, what's coming out of this.
Terrific. All right, update Plumpton's gravel permit application. You asked for this one, Bree?
Yes. We have one permit that expires on December 20th, and that's the Hayward gravel. But part of it was the actual permits themselves, the application, it's not very clear, so we got some from other towns. Halifax had a great one.
Hmm?
It was just really, really basic. So basic that it doesn't ask for a lot of the information. So we wanted to know about getting that adjusted and amending it. So I have the other towns here. They charge for different things, for the soil removal, how much per...
Do you want to make copies of these?
These were sent out once before to you when we were doing the other one, so I didn't know if you still had.
My computer crashed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, would you send it out again?
And that's our, the top one is just us, and it's really simple.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, we don't charge for anything.
Halifax is good. I mean, it's the same thing with the Animal Control Officer.
Right.
Once you put that together, things start to roll out.
Right.
We should do the same thing here.
Because I've had somebody ask me, "What does your application ask for?" And I know that they're written in per individual.
Right.
For the gravel removal that they would be doing, but it's, it's just so basic.
Yeah.
So we got Middleborough, we got the town of Halifax, and what their applications look like.
Okay.
Where the map is, the parcel.
So do you want to synthesize them together? Or do you want to just take like Halifax and say that's probably what we should be doing?
That's what I didn't know. Halifax, we thought, was the better of the two.
Does it refer to bylaws? Because this one refers to bylaws. We'd have to change the bylaws.
Right, we'd have to go in and just do it to our bylaws, which we have.
Okay.
We could give it to the bylaw committee and let them do it.
So I didn't know if this was something that should be given to them, the application, but the application is really done through the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you send us what you've got, and we'll...
We got a month to do this, right? Because it's not coming up until December.
So if we each look at it, maybe next Monday, I mean, it's hard to wordsmith collectively, but we can sort of get a sense of it, and I'll be glad to try to pull it together after we get all of our ideas next week.
Yeah, so let's put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, so I didn't know if you might, I can send you what Middleborough has too, if you want to combine and tweak that, but it's just...
Okay.
So from your perspective, the problem with our, Plumpton's present application is...
Doesn't ask enough information.
Doesn't ask enough.
Doesn't.
And from your perspective, the Halifax one is on target.
Yes.
Okay, so...
But I could bring that to, down to the plan, downstairs to building and say, "Where is this?" I mean, I know that Bob is helping now with gravel, writing them, and I had somebody ask me, "What do you look for?" What are you, and I, that's what I gave them.
Yeah, that is pretty basic.
That's too basic.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Okay, Mark, would you like to report on your MMA Fall Conference highlights?
Sorry, don't mean to add pieces of paper, but I really just pulled together some of the highlights of the Massachusetts Selectment Association Fall Meeting, and there were the legislative highlights, a pretty interesting keynote address on communication challenges and municipal government, and especially about how to deal with challenging situations and how part of our job is to defuse challenging situations rather than add more fire. Budgeting basics program, and then quite a bit about technology. I was kind of amused on that one because Framingham's Public Information Officer, that's her full-time position, to deal with communication from townhouse to the, to the citizens, and, you know, and as I mentioned last week, they have about 12 different accounts that they use, and seems like maybe we can get started with just one. And of course, that was the interesting thing last week in interviewing the two finalists for Town Administrators, they were both strong on that, and I think that may be one of the first tasks we want to have Elizabeth get going on.
Mm-hmm.
And then the only other one I'd mention, and, you know, you can read over the stuff I sent to you, there was a fellow from a company called ClearGov. There are a bunch of these around, but these guys essentially take the data about the town, particularly budget and tax rate and all that, and put it in a really organized form with a pretty presentation, and of course, they charge for it, and we may not be ready for that, but I think his last comment of the day was that investment in data communication and analysis should pay for itself in time, with time savings and cost efficiency. And I think it is a level of communication that we're pretty far behind on, so, I mean, that isn't going to be a primary priority, but boy, it would be nice to have presentation, the means to present in a really organized way and a way that really informs.
Just to follow up on that, Barbara and I went out and visited the firm that we use for the accounting, and talked about a front end on that, to do a lot of what you're talking about. And we need to follow up and make that a project for next year. And I would, you know, I think Barbara should lead it, she's got all the skill sets. But it's definitely needed, and we've, we're in the dark ages there. We need to come, get up to speed.
And, you know, he did put up these graphs that show from year to year what's going on and what direction things are going. So that's merely a matter of figuring out some funding for it in the town meeting article.
Yeah, but it's going to tell you, we're going to have to have front ends written, so you're right, it's going to cost money, but we're going to make sure we know what we're after. So I think we start by looking at other towns, see what they're doing.
And we can go to the Department of Revenue.
So we can put it on the parking lot.
And I do commend, this is a pretty cool fellow. Apparently, one, he claims one in five municipalities uses his services in one way or another. Brian Burdick, ClearGov is the name of his organization.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, let's, let's put it on the parking lot.
Okay.
So we don't forget about that.
One other thing, we haven't seen anything from Monica yet, right?
We did. She gave us, she made your amendments, and she asked us...
We sent her the cover letter, right? The cover sheet?
The cover sheet.
I gave it to you.
Right. I just told her what you wanted changed on that sheet.
Okay.
That you wanted it spelled out, CIP.
So is it coming in, I mean, the final?
Yes, the final will be coming in, and she asked that, that we adopt it. Actually, it was, everything was the same except she made your recommendation.
Yeah, it was nits.
So she asked that we vote to accept it. She made the changes that you recommended, and she was going to submit it to the appropriate parties tomorrow if we took the vote tonight, so that our plan is on file where it needs to be.
Great, so should we take a vote?
Yeah, sure. All right, it's, I think it's on here.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry.
Uh, I thought it was.
I thought it was too.
Okay. Oh, there it is, Approved Town's Capital Improvement Plan, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the town's capital improvement plan as amended by John Trainer, and she, our consultant, Monica...
Lamoy.
Lamoy. No, what's her last name?
Lamboy.
Lamboy, Lamboy. Monica Lamboy made the changes, and we will have a final draft that we can put on the town's website. So we've got a complete capital improvement plan.
I'll second that.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
And thank you, thank you, everybody that worked on it. It's another level of professionalization that we've needed for a long time.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll email you guys the, the final draft, and we'll get that on the website ASAP.
Great.
Okay, review the parking lot. I was looking for my parking lot. It, mine's not with my little packet, but I did have, I had the original.
Yeah.
Is it in that one?
Nope, no it isn't.
No.
I had printed one in each of your folders.
I didn't get it either, and I have to look over your shoulder if you find it.
It was with the, it was in the agenda, with the agenda.
Because I had it with attachment, and then I did one for each of you.
I couldn't open it.
Okay. So that's why you didn't see it.
I got an email.
Okay. Here it is. Parking lot, okay.
I didn't see it on there.
Okay. So first item, these were what we wanted to accomplish this summer. Search, hire Town Administrator Consultant. Check.
One for the home team.
All right. Create Town Administrator Screening Committee.
Yes.
Check. Search, hire Fire EMS Consultant. Check. Tax title land, waiting for treasurer, calling warrant to complete process, then we'll discuss possibilities. I believe she's working on that now.
The, the land of low value, she sent to us last week.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's other parcels that will be in addition, that will be, then go to auction, but that's not part of what she sent us.
And actually, I suppose I'll have a question on that. I understand that the land of low value, it is the treasurer's decision to just send it to auction, and I don't know, is that, that is a question as to whether it's the same with the other tax title land, or whether we get involved ahead of time.
I think by law, she has to go to auction because it's of significant value.
I want to just check that again. We had documents a couple of years ago that had all the categories.
Why don't we have her come in and just walk us through so we're all up to speed?
That would be great.
That'd be good. I'll find that document. I'll find that document as well. It was, um, pretty clear.
Yeah, I think, um, that I've got that too. If, if that is the case, I would just like to throw something out there that, um, for the town-owned land, I would like for us to consider writing a bylaw that would require a, um, a sign-off by like conservation and, um, affordable housing, maybe open space or recreation before it's sold, just so that we could explore. So we're not selling land that may be of, um, value to us.
And I think that's the piece that we gotta be clear on is, I, whether the decision is merely with the town treasurer or more informed about all views from town.
Okay, so we'll, um, we'll put that on an upcoming agenda then.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, do you wanna talk to Colleen, see if she'll come in and meet with us, or do you want Bree to try to schedule something?
Yeah, just have Bree schedule. But I'll mention it to Colleen tomorrow.
Perfect. Awesome. Okay. So the, oh, we're still going, sorry. Ah, losing track. Okay. Meeting with auditors and Barbara Gomez.
So I think what we wanna do is have Barbara come in. Um, we'll be closing the September quarter, that's done. The reports are out, off to...
Give you a clean copy.
The reports are off to, uh, the Department of Revenue. As part of that, we'll find out the certified free cash, et cetera. And one of the things I think we should be doing at least twice a year, probably quarterly, is, uh, having Barbara come in and do a presentation to us. You know, the financial status of the town, and just stay up to date with it.
That sounds really good.
Absolutely.
Probably would have Colleen join us, uh, join Barbara, between the two of them. I mean, that's what's going on.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So I'll follow up with Barbara, because we've already talked about it.
Okay. Well, maybe we can get her on, um, one, an upcoming agenda.
Yes.
To give us a report.
Yeah, it's probably two weeks away, maybe, something like that.
Okay. All right, uh, we had a seven-one date, remove Dale as website administrator. Do you know, has he been removed as the administrator? Okay, so he has been, that's been done. Fall to discuss 2017 report.
Got a different list than I have. Where are you?
Yeah, you do have a different list.
Okay.
What does your list look like? Is yours the same as mine?
Uh, it's what Bree just gave me and it looks, no, it's different.
Okay, okay, all right. So what does yours say next? Okay, so meeting with auditors and Barbara Gomez, legal services, alternate legal support, JT default, so that's done. Rural school aid proposal, um, they were, um, oh, boy, um... I am totally drawing a blank.
It didn't seem to go anywhere.
Jason is following that. If something was, um, that we needed to be aware of, he was gonna bring it to our attention. So that's really in their, um, their wheelhouse. And he said that if something came up, that at that point, nothing, that it was really, uh, some of the rural communities out in, um, the western part of the state were talking about, um, different things, but it was all proposals and nothing, um, concrete. So Jason will report if anything happens that we need to be aware of. DPW projects update, rusted guardrails, Tom Coulter.
So Jim Mulkey kinda whispered in my ear, don't screw up this project. It's like 200, $250,000 that the state would be doing, but they want galvanized, they won't. We pushed back a number of times because the rest of the town is all rusted guardrails.
Right.
And, you know, they tell you, they, because of the rust, they deteriorate quickly, or more quickly than galvanized. But if you go around, all the towns like Ohasse, Duxbury, Hingham, they're all rusted.
Are they all rusted?
Yeah. So we'll let Jim run that. I guess it's gonna be on 106 only.
Okay.
And I'll have another chat, but
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna win that one.
All right, complete easement for police building project, I believe that is still not completed.
Oh, I think that's not.
What do we mean when we say, that's not the five acres, is it?
Yeah, I think it is.
No, the easement, I think, is, I got an email from Colleen tonight, and I didn't get a chance to read it. Let me just see.
Wasn't that an easement on the property we obtained so that they could, um, have a road for a tower?
Right.
And that, um, got completed.
Easement, okay. I have not heard anything from Attorney Schrin regarding the easement agreement with Linda Shawwacker. When I last corresponded with her mid-August, the agreement was in Linda's hands. Sound like they're in process of contract negotiations with a telecommunications company, resulting in waiting easement. Is pretty much completed. Okay, to the best of my knowledge, it is awaiting her signature and then ours.
Okay, so we're not quite done.
Not quite there. Not quite there. Okay.
These are the waiting and signature?
Um, I think, yeah, it's, Linda's got it, we're just waiting for her to bring it back. Okay, negotiate expiring contracts. We had a list from Barbara of when all of these contracts were expiring. I was just looking at it yesterday. You've got it. Okay, so, um, these are the, um, the town contracts. So Lynch, Malloy, those are our auditors.
Yeah, they're, they're new three-year.
So Collins Center, that one is done. DNS hosting service website.
So Michael's working on, uh, we've got the server in for the emails. We get that done, and then I believe he was going to rationalize this. Where we go?
Okay.
We have the, another company, and I can't think right now of the name, uh, but supposedly they'll go away as we do this.
App River?
Yes, App River. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so then we've got, um, Maya. We must have renewed the, the insurance. Cook and Cook, um, Marie's Way Solar.
Which one?
Marie's Way Solar?
I don't even reme...
I don't. I've never heard of that one.
I haven't heard of that one either.
Let's put a little question back.
Okay. Local computer store, that expired in 2016. I thought we did that. I guess we didn't do that.
That's Michael.
That's Mike.
Oh, that's Michael, okay.
And we did do one.
We did, okay. Edron?
I don't know.
Uh, those are done every year. So yes, and then we have a new one for the new police station.
Okay.
Okay. South Shore Generator, that looks like an annual Pioneer Consulting Group. What is that? Do you know? Okay, why don't we put a, um, Blue Wave Capital, it looks like we've got a lot of time on that one. I know we did the Visiting Nurse Association. Didn't we sign that one? Edron, uh, that expired. We did the Edron.
All the Edron, they're done.
So two Edrons, okay. Um, Ford Motor Credit for the Police Department, done?
Yes, and it's actually now a new.
Okay.
That's from the chief.
Okay.
Well, this was done a while back, so she hasn't...
Yeah, some of these, we'll have to update it. All right, um, Vision for the assessors.
I don't know.
Okay.
That would be in there.
All right, um, those were, uh, Plumton Sand and Gravel. I think that was a, um, was that a plowing contract for Jim?
Contract is for plowing.
Okay, all right.
Jim will take care of those.
Perfect. All right. So that one is done. IT upgrades, database software, townhouse hardware software, bylaw codification.
All of those have been, uh, purchased. They're now in the process of being implemented. I think Tara's been working on codification. Uh, the hardware software, we still have some work to do once we get the, we've got the server for the email, once all those email addresses are up. Then we'll go around, there's seven workstations and, uh, probably about that many small printers that need to be purchased. Those are in the grant, so we're covered.
Terrific. Review insurance plans prior to renewal date. I think they've already been renewed, right?
Yes, we just have one that was in a packet that was sent to Dale.
Okay.
But they called. We asked why he didn't email when the payment wasn't received. And he said he thought he was just giving us some time. So there is a warrant that was done for the Maya, which is the property and casualty, which is the buildings, the vehicles, equipment. And it's, a warrant's been done in that line. It's not in any sort of status translation at all.
All right, so we're in good shape with that. Dennett Water Treatment Project, I don't know if there's any update.
I haven't heard. Uh, we should probably ask John Wilhelmsen to, uh, just give us a status report.
Sure. All right, I'll shoot John an email and ask him for an update on that. Um, we just already talked about this, uh, the 2000...
Can I go back one more?
Sure.
About the, the insurance plans. Maya did ask, I have a, um, uh, review set up for, I believe it's 11-3, if I'm not mistaken. They asked about quoting our health insurance. I don't know if that is something that we're interested in. I know the health insurance plan. I don't handle the health here.
It's through Mayflower, right?
But they were renewing for one more year, I believe. Is that what was going on with Colleen?
Yeah.
Was handling that before?
Why don't we have a short discussion with Colleen and see where she's at?
Okay.
I mean, if we just renewed it, I'm not sure it makes sense.
I don't know if that's every May. I don't know if that's that run once a ye... Is it yearly?
I'm not sure.
Okay. But they did ask about our health insurance. Would we like a quote?
Okay.
You know, it wouldn't be a bad idea because I brought it up last year, Mayflower, because we heard that, um, Rockland, I think, and Addington were backing out of Mayflower. And they were backing out because they thought costs were going to increase substantially. And at the time, uh, after Colleen and Barbara, I think, took a look at it, they came back and said, you know, at least for another year, we're probably covered. We're not gonna get huge increases. But who knows the year after? So I think we oughta
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea.
Get a status.
Yeah.
So Bree, maybe you and I and Barbara and Colleen could sit and...
Okay, I think she's 11-7 that she's coming. I'll get the date
Okay.
Of when Adrian's coming. And maybe we could sit down together and...
Sure. I think it'd be a good idea to get a, another opinion about, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we already talked about tax title land.
Yep.
So we'll, um, put that on an upcoming agenda. Response to request for residents' email addresses to add to town informational mailing.
I think this is where Elizabeth could
Yeah.
Give us a lot of insight into how to go forward.
I think that goes right along with the social media piece.
We really haven't done a good job. We haven't figured out how to get to people in a way that entices them. And she could, she could give us a lot of...
We'll have to become more interesting.
Oh, God, I don't know if it's possible.
I know. Jeez, Mike, you're interesting enough.
Actually, the less interesting we are, the better.
All right, so why don't we hold that one? We could talk about that with Elizabeth, and then volunteer list. Um, I think those kinda go hand in hand when, um, so we'll, uh, speak with her about that as well. Ongoing, need occasional reporting, Maple Street Group Home Project. I'm not sure what's happening with that.
It's kinda, it just disappeared.
I actually met one of the abutters recently offhandedly, and it seems to be totally quiescent, so
Okay.
Nothing's happening.
But where is it in terms of us, in terms of, in the building? Is it in conservation?
Um, I, I, um, I think they haven't appealed any of the denials, something along that line. They do not have all the permissions to go ahead.
Okay, okay.
Is it still there on, what are we, are we leaving it there?
Yeah.
Yes, because it, yeah, let's leave it. All right, Carver Urban Renewal Project, I don't have an update. Honestly, I haven't really, um, been checking like I should, and I didn't send those, um, that land to Marlene and, um, Mike, and I think Alan Dunham is the, um, the chair now. So I will, uh, reach out.
This is another one for Elizabeth to get involved in?
I agree.
Um, absolutely.
And it won't interfere with anything that anybody else has got going on?
Right. Well, and she, this is, speaking her language, you know?
Yeah.
All right, um, BOs, goals and priorities, uh, task spreadsheet.
That never worked.
No, it, um, but you know what? I think we've done, uh, a pretty good job.
Well, we have our goals, and we talk to them every week, so...
We do. We do.
Here's, I, I happened by this last week, totally, um, unrelated to this, but it's totally of interest. These are board priorities and projects from 2014, a little over three years ago. And I, I pass it on just, um, for each of you to look at for amusement, just that, uh, where we were three years ago and what we were working on and how we divided it up. And actually, it's not, uh, too discouraging that we made progress on a fair number of them.
Absolutely.
It's also interesting that the same old damn problems keep coming up, and communication being by far number one that we, forever, we stumble over. So that's just a, a little bit of history there.
That is interesting. That is interesting. All right, um...
So let's x that one.
Okay, so, so we have found a different way to stay on task. Mass legislation regarding recreational marijuana. I shared, um, Attorney Kessels, Questles', um, PowerPoint that she had put together with Debbie Anderson from Planning Board and, um, told her that, you know, we would help her if she needed, uh, you know, process questions.
We got a monetary going anyway, so...
We do, we'll wanna extend it. I, I, at some point, would like to wrestle a little bit also with, um, what we're thinking in terms of how much we want in this town.
Well, according to what Ms. Wessel said, it was 10% of, uh, what's the figure? It came out .4 or something.
It can, it can be tied to your liquor licenses.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So it would sound like one.
And I, you know, I, at least, um, sort of, I mean, just as an exploration, I'd like to do the exploration on whether, you know, one or none is what we prefer.
I don't know as if we can say none because the town voted to support it. We'd have to put it on the ballot.
Well, and that's...
I don't see putting it on the ballot. I mean, the town's already voted.
Maybe after, um, Elizabeth is here?
Yeah.
We can talk about it then.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd just like to explore it.
Yeah, and that might be a social media thing, you know? How do you feel about this? Um, you know, this is what we're considering? Okay, so we'll leave this one on. Um, CEC Solar Project.
So you talked about, um, Attorney Questles'.
Yes, I gave that to Planning Board.
Okay, but is that what you wanted to be put on to the website when you had asked for it to be published?
Do you wanna put that on the website?
I don't think so.
Another one for Elizabeth. We, we got a lot of things we're wrestling.
We did have somebody come in and ask about the presentation, and I said it's, I do have it in a folder in the office.
Okay.
So if somebody wanted to review it, a copy of it, yes.
Well, you've got an electronic copy of it, too.
Now I have the electronic one. That's what I was waiting.
Certainly send it out to anybody who asks for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I said, you know, it is available.
I think we have to be careful about legal opinions, because they're legal opinions.
Yeah, but we can't, you know, it was presented, it was on cable.
Yeah, it was a...
It's a public document.
Yeah, well, and it's there for people who wanna ask.
Yeah.
Just, just, just my point of view.
Okay, so you've got it if somebody would like a copy?
He says you can have copy. You wanna look at it?
All right, CEC Solar Project.
So what is that?
That's, uh, the Brook Street Project that we've been waiting now for maybe nine months. It's all in their hands, our, um, uh, the, um, legal agreement has been vetted by our side, and it's back with them. We're supposed to do a pilot, but, um, that also, I've written several times to him, they're paying their taxes and...
And they're paying the full tax?
Yeah, so we're honestly better off probably than otherwise.
Okay. All right, so we'll just leave that one on there. Uh, other committees and boards to be established. Economic Development Committee, this would probably be right in Elizabeth's wheelhouse, too.
Super wheelhouse, absolutely.
And I know, uh, Old Colony Planning Council did, put a nice thing together for Pembroke where they, um, for people who wanted to do business there, it, everything was spelled out. They tried to make it really easy. That might be something we could apply for in a DLTA grant, but we can, you know, see what Elizabeth thinks and, and...
Part of that is, uh, that DOT land, the Department of Transportation. We heard back from Cisco right away, no.
No.
I've never heard back from light control.
Okay.
So I don't know that we have that much industrial land right now to, unless John Norrie decides to open up and do something.
Though we do have the example of Cisco and our ability to pull it together and get the permitting done quickly. And I, I, that's good evidence that we're capable of doing that.
Absolutely.
And we do have, um, business zone land. It's not industrial land on 58, and I think there's some...
Just not a lot of it.
No, there isn't a lot of it. There isn't. There isn't. So if we can find a way to maximize what we've got.
I think when Elizabeth is here, she should meet John Norrie, go out and, or maybe I'll take her out and we just chat. I don't see where he's at. He was supposed to come in, but, you know, it's his land, he can do what he wants.
Right, and it's probably better to go to him.
Yeah.
All right, Possible Ways to Combine Services with a Neighboring Community, Fire EMS, which we're kind of exploring.
Actually, a consultant is going to be meeting Friday with Fire Chief Jason Viveros from Halifax, so we're at least started a conversation.
All right, Assessor's Office. I don't think we've really explored that. Town Accountant.
I don't see the need in that area. Now, maybe down the line.
Well, not until Mrs. Gomez decides she wants to retire and, and then we'll have notice and.
Which brings up another discussion. We should put on a future agenda to talk about the accountant. She would be interested in adding a year to her contract with certain stipulations.
Okay. And when does her contract expire?
October, I think, of 19. So she's got.
Of 19.
No, not two years. She's got.
One year.
Maybe one year. It's a little more than one year, I thought, but anyways.
So she wants to add a year?
She's got it.
Yeah, I think it's here somewhere. Town Accountant, October 2018.
Okay.
So she would be willing to at least discuss through 2019.
Okay. Great news.
Yeah.
All right, IT Person.
It's a future. I mean, we've got Mike Rodriguez now. We can't afford a full-time person.
Can't have everything.
It'd be nice to talk to Halifax, but then we got the problem with Michael Rodriguez, who's doing a good job.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's kind of a.
Yep.
All right, Animal Control Officer, Animal Inspector. This is still something that we're working on and.
And going to be an issue because I think his contract is up not in June, but maybe in.
April, I believe.
February.
Or is it February?
I think it is, and I think it's.
I thought it was April.
I think it is April.
Okay, but it's with his retirement.
Right, with his retirement.
That's the kind of date that's critical.
Which gives us plenty of time to speak with Halifax.
Yeah, we should pursue.
I know they were interested in before. Hopefully, they're still interested in working with us.
That would be good. Kingston would be another one because they have a good operation down there. I'm not at all sure they'd be interested in sharing, but it might be a cost-effective way to deal with it.
Perfect. Planning, was this getting a planner?
Yeah, we just, well.
We just hired one. Or we're negotiating with one.
Yeah. There you go.
Elizabeth.
For Elizabeth, I know. She's going to be a jack of all trades. All right, Community Roundtable, Maureen Springer, Jason Fraser. This is something we talked about quite a long time ago, possibly doing in the fall, and it just.
Well, I think two things happened. One, she was the one who came forward and wanted, then we had the legal meeting where she was at, and I think that, and Jason was there, too, if I remember correctly. So I think we, it's worth following up and maybe having, when did we do that? Couple of months ago? Three months ago? Boy.
Well, I don't think either one of them went to the meeting with Rich Bowen.
Oh, yeah, I think they did.
I don't think so.
Do we have a list of Rich Bowen?
Yeah, I don't think Maureen went. I think she asked, did, should, do I need to go?
Okay, well, you're probably right.
I thought it was a different thing that she asked about going.
It's worth putting on the agenda for when do we want to meet.
All right, why don't I'll reach out to Maureen and Jason and see what, if they'd like to get together and talk to us. I mean, we're definitely going to want to talk about when the budget cycle starts and all of that kind of.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it should be more of a community, all the boards coming in to just talk about, you know, sort of what their plans over the next six months.
She sent, did you guys get her email about a seminar they're doing at the high school about technology and how it's affecting kids?
I don't think I am.
Let me see if I can find it. It looked really interesting and things that parents really should consider doing. Basically, I think it's, you know, cutting down on the amount of technology in social media and how it's, you know, had, there's been good stuff and a lot of bad stuff with it.
Yeah, we are, we're doing this huge neuroscientific experiment on a whole generation of kids, on one effect of their brain.
Oh, my God, it's.
And it's, from a neurologist, from a veterinary neurologist perspective, it's absolutely frightening.
You know what? I, I'll send it to both of you guys.
Yeah, please.
And maybe we can even get it on the website. I believe it's this week that they've got someone coming in who I think is a pretty.
At Silver Lake?
At Silver Lake, impressive in this field. I'll find it.
It was a teenage thing that they were doing.
Yes, it's about how technology has impacted teenagers, and it's really more for, for parents and, and just interested parties. So I'll get that and we'll, we'll promote that. Fill Me More Meetings Internally, Check With Rich From Area 58.
I think we've done that, haven't we?
Well, actually, I was at an Area 58 Board Meeting last week. We've used roughly 80 or 90 out of the 125 we have, which is pretty close to the same.
And that's through, that's a calendar year?
Yes. A few meetings less than Carver and Halifax, but we're all pretty much on target. Pretty much on target not to use up our allotment and using up about the same amount.
And Christine, that's called Screenagers.
Screenagers, that's exactly what it is.
Silver Lake Regional High School and the Silver Lake Regional High School PTO presents Screenagers. Growing up in the digital age, a documentary about the biggest parenting issue of our time. October 25th at 7:00 at Silver Lake Regional High School, open to parents, students, teachers, and the community members.
So that's Wednesday at 7:00 PM? Where is it, in the auditorium? Probably.
It's probably there. Are you watching kids go through life, scroll through life with their rapid-fire thumbs and a six-second attention span?
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to put something on the website to let people know about that?
That went out on Facebook, didn't it?
It went out to me, because I have a daughter at that school, so I have signed up. And then each class has a page.
Okay.
So that's how we're getting the information. I don't see, I have to get this up tonight, I can ask Tara.
It might be on, I bet it is on Facebook.
But I'm sure it's on Facebook.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that showed up.
On the Plimpton Helping.
Okay.
But we all have our, I have a class of 2018.
Okay.
And it's on there.
Okay.
So all the information, it's constantly flowing through.
Okay, yeah, I think that there would be a lot of people that would be interested in that.
So do you want this?
Yeah.
Or do you think it's just on to Facebook? I mean, we can't post behalf of the school.
Do you want it on the website or?
I don't think it's going to make any difference, given it's this late.
Okay.
That's Wednesday, I mean.
It's, yeah, two days away.
So spread the word out there.
So it's already on Facebook?
I, it is, for each of your class. I don't know if it's on Plimpton Helping Plimpton. I can share it.
You know what, Tara, or you could share it with Plimpton Helping Plimpton.
So I'll find out that it's on there.
Sounds good. Okay, Master Plan for Plimpton.
Another one. Elizabeth.
Yeah, we can talk about that with Elizabeth. Okay, John, this one was yours. Merchant Services and Mobile Credit Card Processing Solutions.
So it came up that we couldn't buy something because we didn't have a credit card. But it seems we've got to work around with Michael Rodriguez. That's how we solved it. He went out and purchased it and then put it on his bill, which is all right as long as he doesn't put a mock-up on it. We don't want to pay for that. And I think he's good with that, and I'm not sure that Dexbury went forward, went forward with it. And I haven't bothered to follow up because pretty much Barbara and Colleen thought I was nuts.
Okay. Well, then why don't we cross that one off? All right, D O R Advisory Committee, Financial Best Practices. Are we done?
I think from the original D O R recommendations, we have pretty well gone through.
Yeah, and I think, you know what, I still have the list.
Yeah.
I can email this to Barbara.
Yeah.
And see if we have addressed all of those issues.
I've got it in here, too.
Okay.
We probably need a new list at some point, but not right this minute. We've got too much on the board.
Well, and this was, what, the 2014, 2015 D O R report? So I'm sure there's a new, actually, the following year report was really nice. It's getting smaller and smaller each year.
They have made, Barbara and Colleen have made great progress in getting the processes right so that both the auditors and the D O R are being satisfied.
Okay. All right, so I'll check with her about this, and we might be able to dissolve that committee because basically we're zooming in.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we should do that, yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's it for the parking lot.
And we made a lot of progress.
We did make a lot of progress. Still some things to, to work on, but we did make a lot of progress. All right. Did I toss my agenda in here, too? Parking lots, here we go. Okay, so.
Liquor license, I think, is where we are.
Yeah, ABC Liquor License Renewals have been received and will be mailed by November 1st.
Well, okay.
Okay, so we're on track.
So we have three. That'll be the club.
Gas station.
One pending, the gas station, right, to see how that's going to go.
Yeah, and then you've got the convenience.
The convenience.
Perfect, okay. And you've got all the paperwork you need. All right, John, I'm guessing this one is you?
Use of.
Use of acronyms.
So I have a problem with this.
L O L.
When we write our, not just minutes, but anything we do that's going to be public, it's not for us, it's for the public. And so a lot of the acronyms that we're familiar with, they don't know. And all we have to do is put in, you know, BOS, replace, Board of Selectmen, and it goes through and updates everything. And I'm just saying, let's not use acronyms. If we have a, something that, where we're using acronym, then we should, the first time it's used, spell it out, put it in parentheses, and then move on.
Which is the, which is the best practices in scientific writing, and I think makes a lot of sense.
So we should just make it a policy, is that, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I think any document that's being shared, absolutely, the first U should be spelled out.
Right. I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good. So let's.
Do we need a motion or not?
Well, we can, we can vote it. All right, so that will.
Should we put penalties in?
Yes.
I just, I can't, we can't speak on behalf of another board. It could make the document, so if I put, like, usually in my minutes, it says that.
Why don't we do it as a recommendation?
Okay.
That the Board of Selectmen, let's put a letter out, Bree, that we recommend that when you're using acronyms in documents, that your minutes in documents that, that you publish, that the first time you use the acronym, you spell it out with it in parentheses, and then after that, you can use it as an acronym.
Like I do for the minutes.
Yes, so that people understand what.
So you want that out to everybody?
Yeah, if you could just do that as a recommendation. Okay, Housing Production Plan Survey. We have a Housing Production Plan Survey that went live last week, and we're, I'll send out a press release. Carolyn Cristopano put together a really nice press release for us that has the link. So I will get it to Tara. She'll do a, she said a blast with that. We can put it on the website as well, and what we're looking for is guidance from the town in the types of affordable housing that, that you would like us to include in the plan, that, you know, whether you're looking for homes, like a larger home to be renovated into for apartments, or whether you're looking for something more like the Woodlands, you know, we want to keep with the rural character of the town, and we're looking for some guidance.
Great.
So the survey will close October 31st. On 11-1, Lori Muncy, who is our planner with Old Colony Planning Council, will be here with us to present the survey results and do a presentation on where we are now and what we're trying to accomplish in the plan. It'll just be a general overview. It won't be specifics, at least I don't think it's going to be real specific about the plan. Basically, just what our stats are and where we need to go so that we're on track with creating affordable housing.
That's great. That's 11-1, the housing plan.
11-1, yeah, we're, at 6:00, we're meeting with Joy Marble from Council on Aging to talk about senior needs. And at 7:00, Lori Muncy will be here to do a presentation.
What day is that?
That is a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday.
How do you spell Lori Muncy?
11-1. It is M U N C Y. So it's L A U R I E. Yep, M U N C Y. So should be interested, and we'll have cable here to, to film.
And Lori is with?
They will be filming it?
Yes, we will be filming it.
Then I won't come.
Okay, you can watch it.
Yeah, I'll watch it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Lori Muncy is with?
With Old Colony Planning Council. She is our, the planner, our consultant, who with a D L T grant is helping us to create an affordable housing plan. So she has pretty much got it ready to roll. We're waiting for these survey results, and then I will get a draft to you guys for review and comment. And we need to have it completed by December 31st of this year, which we are, are on track to make that happen.
I contacted Area 58, they were.
Perfect. Okay, on to correspondence.
Okay. This is a thank you note from Joshua Garcia, one of the finalists that we interviewed last week for the town administrative position, thanking us greatly for the chance to spend some time with us.
Nice.
He was a really very fine young man.
I spoke to him over the weekend, just as a courtesy call, and he was incredibly gracious and enjoyed the experience and looks forward to.
Wish him all the best and good luck in his.
We're going to hear from him again.
Oh, absolutely.
And that, my call was mainly about that, of how impressed I think we all were and that we expected there'd be.
that we expected there'd be...
Big things for him.
Absolutely. Let's see, this is a blurb from Massachusetts Municipal Association. Apparently, we each get a copy of this.
Oh, terrific.
About the annual meeting in January, the end of January at the Sheraton Hotel. I will definitely be going to this, it's great fun. So there.
Can you just go to one of the days if you can't go Friday?
One can go to just one of the days. It's all day Friday, most days Saturday, invariably it snows on Saturday, and people want to leave early, but...
Okay.
Just so many programs and a whole bunch of actually positive constructive energy.
Do you drive in, or do you take train?
You know, I cheat, I drive in and I actually splurged for myself and got a room overnight, so I didn't have to go back and forth.
Where, okay, the Heinz Convention Center, okay. All right.
And they fill it up with vendors, I, I mean, you talk about those visual demonstration communication vendors, boy, there's a gazillion of those.
I bet there are.
And they do really nice stuff.
I think there's a train station, a stop right, a couple of blocks from that.
Maybe I'll ride in with you.
Okay. Wonderful. We can, we will...
No deliberation?
Yeah, we will absolutely not deliberate, we'll talk about the beautiful scenery in the countryside. This is...
Well, any, I'm sorry, but are you going to think about attending, or?
It's in January, don't ask us now.
You've got a little bit of time.
Okay, let me know, do you want me to hold on to those? Do you want me to?
Yeah, you want to take, you can keep mine. There you go.
I take it you're not going?
I'm not sure, I don't know.
Well, sorry.
High quality speakers too. Charlie Baker one year was the keynote, Elizabeth Warren was the keynote another year, Lieutenant Governor, high quality stuff. So this is the Massachusetts Tree Warden Association, they're looking for a nomination for the Tree Warden of the Year for 2018. I may be, I'm pretty sure I'm remembering correctly that Archery Warden received this award a few years ago.
And after you receive it, they like to leave, have it go to someone else.
Sure. Who's done a good job.
He's done a really nice job.
Otherwise, it would be worth nominating again. Old Colony Planning Council, this was the agenda, oh, it's the upcoming agenda for the meeting, the 25th, which is your department.
Is my department.
All right, so this is an email from former selectman Colleen Thompson to us, the selectmen, with reporting concerns at the...
I'm going to do an update on that.
Pardon?
I'll do an update on that.
All right.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next time? No, I do, right now.
Okay.
So this has been a thorn in the side. The Plimpton Historical Society is one person right now, Jessica Kinsman, she's president. We've not been able to put together a board, and certainly if there's any volunteers out there that would like to get involved in the history of the town, and not, not just the ancestry aspect, but really the history of the town. We need a board, and we would welcome any and all people. The, we have a problem with the well, okay, and we had a problem with the toilets, in that we think the well went dry and it, therefore the pump burnt out.
Yeah.
Now, I get conflicting information, but they say the well is not the biggest issue. It does have a dry period during the summer, but the rest of the year seems to work fine. So Jessica is ordering a new pump. One of the problems we have is she has the checkbook that, you know, she does all the maintenance. The agreement with the town is they rent it for a dollar, they pay the maintenance, we only do snow and removal, that type thing. We need a board because she's also the treasurer. We just put myself on to sign for the CD that we have, that Mrs. Dennett had left to the Plimpton Historical Society, but we really need a board. If we can't get the plumber that we've had in the past, then I'm going to find one in town, but we need to get that done. The second part of that is we've put in a request to the conservation, the Community Preservation Commission for a five-year plan that includes one of the years to actually look at it, tease them well. I know it's, it's, people are, you know, they're bent out of shape. They have to bring water in buckets so that they can flush the toilet.
Oh, good lord.
So we've got to make sure, the interior of the place is really nice. The exterior is, looks pretty shabby. We've actually had some requests for weddings, they've come over and looked at it and said no, because of the exterior. So there is a plan to go forward, we've just got to make it speed up, and I'm working with Jessica, and we'll see if we can get that done quickly.
So have you joined the board, is that?
Well, I'm a member of the, no, I'm not on the board, not do I want to be, but I'm a member of the Historical Society, like almost everybody in town, I think.
Yeah. So I actually might consider joining the board, and I can't believe I'm saying that on camera. More importantly, maybe.
You talked to Kim?
No. I just, I, Community Preservation Committee meets Thursday night, and we will be considering that application.
Will we have a chance to talk to it?
Yeah, we first, the way we do it, first meeting is the committee going over it, and, I mean, it's an open meeting, you can certainly come, but we kind of internally want to sort of get a sense of whether it's an appropriate project for CPA funds, and, you know, how we feel about it in general, and then we invite the application, applicants in for the next meeting. To the degree that the law allows, I'm incredibly enthusiastic about anything we can do. I mean, it's a committee of nine, and we'll have to see. We've done, we, CPC has done at least two other projects with PHS, and be thrilled to do them again, so.
Yeah, we, well, there's just so much going on, not just the Zumba classes and the yoga classes, the Historical Commission uses it to meet. I've been thinking about whether the Council on Aging should be involved.
No, and I think it's a tremendous town asset.
Oh, it is.
We just, it'd be crazy not to keep it going, so, besides the CPC, I may be able to help out in other ways as well.
And I, another thing is maybe we can talk to the Plimpton Garden Club and see if there's some synergy there. There used to be, because basically everybody who was on one was on the other.
I mean, this goes back to the volunteerism, and I mean, obviously, the underlying problem is we are all frantically exponentially more busy than we used to be.
So in terms of Colleen's correspondence, it's noted, I mean, right on, and we need to get busy and fix this?
So is there bottled water, or some water in the building?
There's, well, the pump doesn't work, so there's no water.
No, but I mean, do you have, like, any jugs of water?
That's what people bring.
Some people, wow.
But presumably with the pump in, that, those issues, at least in the immediate, at least until dry season.
We get the pump in, we fix the toilets, and we put a shut-off valve. One of the problems is that you flush the toilet, you leave because you've done, and it keeps running and running and running. So the shut-off valve will stop it. We'll just have to remember when we come back in to check it. Because you'll have to turn it back, back on to get...
Right, to get it to flush again, yeah.
I do know a couple of times the lights have been locked on in there.
That's been a problem, and I know it drives Jessica a little up the wall, you know, she has to come up at night and turn out lights. Colleen goes over because she lives across the street, but at night, you know how we have our security to get into the place? It's kind of fumbling around, so we've got to fix it. You know, part of the request, we had John Wilhamsen and Rudd come in, Paul Stein, and one of the things is, the front of the building, you know, it's stark preservation, we have to, the door really needs fixing, but we can't just go off and buy a door, we've got to fix the door. What we would like to do is put a combination lock, and apparently John has seen these in, I think, Williamstown and down in Washington DC, so that they fall within the stark preservation.
Nice.
Okay, they don't, they're not visible. It sits kind of behind it, and then you go in and you key in. That has a lot of appeal because, one, we gave rid of all the keys around town, but two, we could change the lock combination whenever we felt, like once a month if we thought that was something that needed to be done.
Excellent.
So, good ideas, we've just got to get the execution.
Nice.
Would you be interested in getting Colleen Belmont to bring, at least to have drinking water, or do you not want that?
You know, if we fix it, I don't know that we'd want to do that.
Okay.
Everybody brings their own drinking water, you know. So we'd be using drinking water for the toilets in the meantime.
Okay.
So, back to correspondence. So this is from a law firm letting us know that the auction on 150 County Road has been postponed again to November 22nd. Let's, let's go this way. Warrants that were signed this week, Plymouth Rock, 135, Maya, 51,220, that's our one-year premium that sort of got lost in the mail. US Bank, 155, Verizon, 50 cents, something, EverSource, 420, EverSource, 85, Verizon, 177, and Community Paradigm Associates, $5,700 for the rest of our search. This is an email from the fire chief to the building administrator that Bree was CC'd on, and the fire chief writes that the dwelling at 34 O'Neill Street is unsecured and unsafe, and certain issues over there, and that he's put a red X on the house identifying it is unsafe for the fire department to come in.
The saga continues. Pardon? The saga continues.
Yeah, I, enough said. This is from United Way, and it is an announcement about three services they offer. One is a telephone hotline, 211, that offers year-round information on health and human services available in the area. There is a platform called Volunteer South Coast, which allows for people looking to volunteer, for their volunteer efforts to be matched by other local nonprofits. And then there's a third thing called Family Wise Drug Prescription Discount that offers the opportunity for significant discounts in prescription medication. So all that's through the United Way of Plymouth County. They have a website, which is uwgoc.org. Okay. Good, all right. Brings us to Plimpton Halifax Express, news from the Board of Selectmen last week, which we all noticed. Nice picture of Tanker One on the front page, a wonderful article about George Colby, who we saluted at 6 o'clock. Sunrise tomorrow morning at 7:07, and a bunch of pictures from the fire department opened doors a little bit ago.
Oh, that's so sad about 7:07.
Well, daylight savings time is coming, and so...
Yeah, and then it'll be dark at 4:30.
There you go. And with pleasure, I report that that completes correspondence.
All right, dates to remember, our next meeting will be Monday, gosh, October 30th, already? Holy cow, where does the time go? At 6:00 PM. Board's goals for coming year, financial management, we just approved our CIP plan, we've done our financial policies, and we have our five-year forecasting tools, so we have really scored pretty well on this one.
We have, we're moving forward very well.
Moving forward. Public safety.
They meet Wednesday night, and I'll, I'll join in.
Okay. Grants, oh, Old Colony Planning Council is going to help us do that energy grant that we have to have done by December 11th, I think it was, so that we could be eligible for future Green Communities money.
Okay.
So they're going to help us with that, and then the fact that we have wrapped up this community compact will free us up to apply for more community compact projects.
So there's also this Efficiency and Regionalization Grant Program that was just announced by the Lieutenant Governor in the DOR newsletter. I don't know, since we're a green community, since we're part of the compact, I'm wondering if we could put the fire consultancy in for that. It's worth a shot, all they can do is say no. It's not really regionalization, but on the other hand, we're talking to a surrounding town.
Or at least some portion of it is, that's pretty creative.
Very creative.
So I'll try to follow up with this?
Yeah, and...
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
Well, I could do it too, John, doesn't, whatever works for you. We could even maybe do both, I don't know how much money they're looking at, but possibly part, if not all of what we're doing now, and if there's a next step based on their recommendation, using grant money to, to pay for the actual, you know, getting us there, if that's their recommendation.
Now, the fire, in one sense, isn't a huge amount of money, it's $20,000, so to the extent we can build it up, I remember the technology grant, that we went in too low, and effectively that kind of was the feedback, that should have asked for more money.
Okay.
Now, we got it when we did ask for more money, so...
Okay.
If we can build this up, it's worth a try.
Well, if you were looking at both, you would definitely have this built up.
Yeah, so why don't we get together and chat about that?
Yeah, perfect, all right, good idea. All right, volunteerism, we're still working on that, but we're hoping with our town administrator that we're able to better communicate volunteer opportunities.
Yep.
And, and get some new people involved. Technology?
HAWKAS, I went back to HAWKAS and told them that we want to go forward on the interactive projection system that they're talking. They asked for a purchase order, and I said, we don't do that. So, I said, we could give them a vote, because we voted this.
Yeah.
So all we need is a document that says that a Board of Selectmen meeting of blah, 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 it was approved, and that was fine with them, so...
Which we did, you were at last time, right?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So could you pull that together, Bree? It's just a short paragraph that says this was voted, put it on Plimpton Town Stationery, and then, and our three things, and we'll all sign it, and I can fax it over, scan it over.
Perfect.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, what, what did you want on each of them? The three things that we've?
Just the three signatures.
Signatures, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, social media, I think this is kind of on hold until we get Elizabeth in, and we can talk to her about...
Somewhat related to that, do we want in the very near future sort of put together a sort of a priorities, our sense of priorities for Elizabeth, begin to give her a little direction? She offered in meeting with her, or in phoning her last weekend, to sit down with any or all of us, even before she starts.
Yeah, we want to do that.
And I think that'd be good to do, and she's, I think she's anxious to, you know, get some food for thought and at least start thinking.
Yeah, she wants to get started, she's very anxious.
I think we should do one-on-ones.
Yeah, that's what I had told her.
And I actually am interested in sitting down with her pretty soon, if we're going to go that route, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely, why don't we put, yeah, put together a list of your priorities and...
I, I think when I talk to her, I'm going to take her on a tour of the town.
Okay.
The places everybody should see, the dump.
Transfer station.
Where everything happens.
First-class dump.
The Up and Club.
Yeah.
All right, I'm taking a Decatur's Ridge though.
Good, excellent.
Oh, that'd be beautiful, very nice. Yeah, you should do that soon, while it's so beautiful back there.
You know, I think what Bernie said is, the first 30 days, meet people. That's got to be the main priority. After that, we can add some stuff just so she doesn't twiddle her thumbs.
Right, right.
Billings Cafe.
Yeah.
Exactly, yep, yep.
Yeah. Yes, there's anything going on at the school, just getting out there.
Get to the school, meet Peter, whoever else is available that day.
Yeah, they've got CASA stuff going on, or hall fairs. Okay. Good, well, I'll get on Council and find out where the contract is.
I have one thing.
So I left a message for our representatives, John wants her to have her own phone.
Yes.
And number?
I think it was ridiculous that Bree had to pick up for Dale.
Oh, their, his, their own extension here?
He has his own extension.
So they have a direct dial?
Yeah.
She wants, he wants her to have her own telephone number.
Okay.
Direct dial, not extension.
Same as Tyler.
So we'll add it back on to the website, because we took it off.
Okay.
And then we'll make it Town Administrator, so if she, someone does call the main number, the town administrator will have their own extension if you come through that line, or she'll have a direct line.
That makes sense.
Because mine will bump over.
I would think she's going to be getting a lot of phone calls, and...
Maybe not right away, but certainly after she's known.
Yeah, after she gets in here, she would, and it just makes sense. Where nobody's having to answer her phone and just, you know, send it, okay. All right, so minutes, oh, go ahead.
Winnetoxit Swimming Hole. Can we rename it, make it like Winnetoxit Recreation Area?
Area?
Let me, that's come up in CPC when we did the renovation a couple of years ago, and I think we ended up with the old mill as, as the name.
You did, it was like Cotton Mill Pond, or?
But I, I think, I mean, it's not necessarily our purview, CPC, but if I may discuss it with them Thursday night, maybe report back, yeah...
I would still rather Winnetoxit Recreation Blank, what, what is it called?
Recreation Area?
Is it Winnetoxit Swimming Area now?
It's Winnetoxit Swimming Hole.
Yeah, or, you know, I have no problem, like, with the old Winnetoxit Swimming Hole.
Formally known?
We've got a big no swimming sign.
I know!
Or it's the Winnetoxit No Swimming Hole.
No Swimming Hole, exactly.
Okay, I'm, I'm, let's talk about that next week.
All right, let's put it on the agenda.
Is that historical or anything?
I don't, I don't think so. The cotton gin place was historical.
The area is, is historical in terms of, yeah, the mill that was there.
I didn't know there was a mill there, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, there's a neat little plaque that talks about the history of the area. Yeah, it's very neat, okay, so we'll put that on there for next week. Okay, so 10, 16 minutes.
So you want that on? I'm sorry, I, I don't have...
Okay, yeah, put the Winnetoxit Swimming Hole on next week's agenda.
For renaming.
All right. All right, so we had minutes that Mark provided us for our meeting on 10-17 and 10-19.
I was fine with everything except the one correction I gave.
Mark was sad.
And I, I wasn't there, right?
Right.
Okay, so...
You were there in spirit.
I was in spirit.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not. All right, so 10-17 was the Tuesday, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 10-17 as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, does somebody else want to make a motion on the 10-19?
Make a motion, 10-19 be accepted with, was that the one, there was a correction?
Yeah.
With the correction.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there, Bree. All right, so, and you'll have the 10-16 for us next week?
Yes, I will.
Okay. All right, selectmen's rants and raves. Who wants to go first?
I don't really have a lot. Last week I raved about the town transfer station, and I'm going to follow up that in the future, because it turns out that if, by recycling and filling up those bins, we don't have to pay when the contractor comes in and takes those away. But if it goes into the trash, we have to pay the, for the contractor to cut it. So, not only do we save, you know, by saving the shipment, but it frees up all that space. So, I think we want people to know that, and I think maybe we want to talk to Jim about maybe having something down there that tells people that. I'd, I think, says we're somewhere between 60 to 80 percent, you know, recycled. We have no way of really knowing, but I think to the extent people understand, this is a cost savings to the town, ultimately. And then my rave is for the beautiful weather we're having in October.
Good.
Very nice. That recycling would be good for social media.
It would be, you're exactly right.
Good topic.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to go, I'll go next with my rave, and that's to George Colby for being a dedicated volunteer for so many years to the town and how volunteers are what makes this town work. And thank you so much, George, and, and your wife for your service to the town, it is truly appreciated, and we hope that you enjoy your, your retirement.
Good ones, both. So I'll echo a little each of what you said, and I was thinking about George Colby and 43 years worth, and maybe this goes back to volunteerism, the pleasure, those 43 years of long nights and looking in the middle of the night, but boy, when you do service for 43 years, can never take it away from you. You can always walk around with your head high and the weight off your shoulders, so there is tremendous reward in volunteerism. Somewhat similarly, I had spoken on the phone on Saturday to both Elizabeth and Joshua and had lovely conversations with each of them, and conversations about service and what the opportunity we have to be of service, and was driving around the town delivering some stuff to CPC members on this stunningly beautiful day that was more beautiful than any other day in the history of the universe, except the day before and the next day, and driving around this stunningly beautiful day, this stunningly beautiful time, town, and the chance that we have to do things to kind of perpetuate all that, so, appreciating all that.
Very nice.
Good.
All right, anything else, anyone?
Nope.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, see you next week.